Thank you everyone and welcome to the August 12th, 2014 scheduled Board of Trustees Meeting. Thank you all for being here on tonight. We are resuming after having been in executive session since 5:30. And thank you for your patience as it took us longer than the scheduled time to conduct all of the business that was required. So I'm happy to see so many of you are here and also happy to see the sun is now back out. We arrived at 5:15 to 5:20. Many of us got drenched, so we're glad that you could make it and the sun is shining again. At this time, we're gonna stand and Mr. James Manning is gonna do our inspirational reading and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to reflect on a single word that I think has something that we need to think about as we go into the new school year. And that's the word priority. We use the word priority a lot, but to really think through what that means. Webster's calls it something giving or meriting attention before competing alternatives. And I think when we think about education and where that falls on our priorities as teachers, as parents, as community members. And then we look at what we talk about and what we see, and I think there are sometimes conflicts. I look out my work window every day and I see a countdown to the football season for USC. I never see a countdown to the beginning of public education for our students. In America, education is a right, not a privilege, and that makes us unique and something that we should cherish. And so for me, I believe that we must instill in our children that school is a priority. We must do more than talk about it. We as parents and educators and others must actually demonstrate that in our everyday lives. And so as we enter into the new school year, I hope that each of you will think about how we can make education a priority for our students so that they can be the best they can be in the many roles that you have and that others have in the community. So thank you for being here to help demonstrate that education is a priority to our students tonight. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe seated? Thank you, Mr. Manning, for that inspirational moment and pledge. Before I begin proceeding with the agenda, I'd like to acknowledge a dear friend of mine that I've seen in the audience tonight, Dr. Benson Carpenter, a former colleague of mine at the State Department of Education. Glad to have you here tonight. I think you can call a lawyer a doctor, isn't that correct? In case anyone think I didn't know what I was saying. Thank you for being here. At this time, the Chair will approve the agenda. You entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
By Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Specter. Hearing no further discussion, ready to vote? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Specter, approve motion. Then Ms. Brill seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our faculty focus. Dr. Ham?
Yes, I'd like to call on Nancy Gregory. She'll be introducing the faculty focus for this evening. And then also Jamie Westmoreland and Clarissa Bennett from Kelly Mill Middle School and Round Top Elementary.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory, and good evening Chairman Jackson, members of the board, Dr. Ham, and executive staff members. I appreciate having the opportunity to speak to you this evening about George Curros. George was one of the speakers that we had the privilege of hearing at the back-to-school administrative in-service this summer. As soon as Mr. Curros started his speech that day, he invited all of us to pull out our cellphones, our iPads, our Chromebooks, or whatever piece of technology we happened to have at the meeting, and start a Twitter conversation while he was speaking. And the first thing that struck me about George was that he had over 57,000 Twitter followers, and I had 12 at the time. But thanks to his speech, I now have 36 moving up rather rapidly. But there are a lot of things that George talked about that really made me think about my role as an educator and as a principal. But the one thing that really stood out to me, and I'm not sure if he really said it, but it made me think about it, was the way that we teach and how fast the way we teach is changing and how fast what we teach is changing in education. And as George was speaking, I found myself along with many of the other administrators in the room tweeting on my Twitter page, reading and retweeting comments that others were making on their Twitter pages, and looking up websites that he or she, or he was referencing, and also some that the people that were in the conversation were referencing. So it was like a Converse Speech type situation that was going on. But also, I was learning all along. And not only was I learning about technology and the innovative use of technology from George and everyone else who was part of the conversation, but I was also sharpening my technology skills and my ability to follow others on a multitude of educational topics. It really made me think about the wealth of information that is provided for our students and how instant and interactive learning can be throughout a lesson. It made me think that when, as learners, we are allowed to participate in the conversation, speech, or lecture, we're much more engaged and become more useful and meaningful to us as learners. If you think about it, our minds are going 1,000 miles per hour, and we're thinking about a zillion different things. And we're also, we also always have that itch to check our cellphone or check our iPad to see if that message has come up. But allowing us to use our cellphones and our iPads to participate in the conversation and learning eliminated the urge to do that. The same thing goes for our students every day in the classroom. I later went on to blog about my experience that day and continued to tweet about it and therefore reflect on the topic for several more days. I think that is exactly what we want all of our students to experience in the classroom. Ongoing learning that inspires our learners to communicate, be connected, be creative, and share ideas with a classroom of learners and experts that is much bigger than the classroom that we're currently in. I will leave you with a brief quote that George shared with us from a 15-year-old student who tweeted this after following and reading some teacher blogs and tweets about teaching and learning. She posed the question to the educators, "Are we teaching for yesterday or for tomorrow?" And I think this is something we need to continuously think about in Richland School District 2. Are we preparing our students for yesterday or for tomorrow? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Clarissa Bennett, Assistant Principal at Round Top Elementary. And I was invited to speak with you about our professional learning as administrators. I took notes. I had some time to reflect, and I just didn't want to leave anything out. I felt like that experience was very important and that you needed to hear about what we were able to do this summer. This summer, 100% of administrators in Richland 2 were granted the opportunity, the time, and the resources to continue our professional learning by engaging in a book study of our choice. The book topics varied and were selected based on our interest and district priorities. There were nine different books to choose from, so in June, we each heard an overview of those books, and then we selected the book that we chose to read. Myself and my partner, Jamie Westmoreland right behind me, we elected to read a book called Multipliers. And when we returned in July, we facilitated a book study with any of the other administrators within the district that elected to read that book as well. So in June, again, everybody chose a book to read, and at our July in-service, we had time to discuss what we learned with others who read the same book. It was just very important that we had that opportunity and that time to engage in discussions because that discussion expanded our learning even further. And I was very pleased to see when we returned in July, when we looked at the strategic district priorities going forward, those nine priorities that leadership and continued learning and supervision and mentoring for leadership was on that list. And I felt like this activity supported that particular priority. So what did we learn? In our book study, again, that book was Multipliers by Liz Weisman, I'll begin by sharing a story. This is a story about Brian, who had a reputation for being smart, optimistic, and collaborative, and could solve just about any complex problem that got tossed his way. His reputation earned him a key role as the Director of Operations in his department. Now, everyone has a supervisor, but unfortunately, Brian's supervisor was what we would call today a diminisher, and I'll explain that to you. Each day, Brian enthusiastically went to work solving the problems in his department. However, he soon found that his supervisor didn't really want the underlying issues addressed. His supervisor wanted one thing, to grow an empire. He did that by hiring the best of the best, hoarding resources, and underutilizing his employees' talents. All that his supervisor wanted was growth at all costs. Brian's role quickly degenerated into window dressing, where he and his team fixed the issues on the surface. For many months, Brian continued to pursue his work at full steam, but deep problems were festering in his department. With continued indifference from his supervisor, Brian became numb and started to settle into mediocrity. He lost good employees within his department. When other leaders in the organization saw the depth of the problems within his department, Brian's Midas Touch reputation quickly tarnished. After hanging in there hoping for things to improve, Brian found himself stuck in a dying organization, watching his opportunities fade. Soon, Brian became one of the Walking Dead that roamed the halls of so many organizations. And if you're familiar with that TV show, The Walking Dead, you know that that show is about zombies. Zombies are dead, no character, no thought, no feelings, just lifeless bodies going through the physical motions of feeding on what's alive until what's alive is dead too. And that's just what happened to Brian. He began going through the motions on the outside, but on the inside, he had given up. Now, this story is an excerpt from this book. Again, it's called Multipliers by Liz Weisman, if you'd like to read it. The lesson here is that leaders cannot breed zombies into any organization, or it will die from the inside out until there is no more life, just like The Walking Dead. During our book discussion, which included district and school-level administrators, we discussed ways that we could avoid creating the zombie apocalypse in our departments and our schools by multiplying the genius of those that are around us every day. And to tell you more, I have my partner.
Good evening. Jamie Westmoreland from Kelly Mill Middle School. I'm 7th grade administrator. And I just wanted to reflect on how that book has already impacted my leadership. Went home at the end of the school year, reflected on all of the different issues that we had had over the year, and you know, had my little things, the solutions that I wanted to come up with so I could come back in this school year. Here are the answers to all of our problems. After, after reading that book, I realized that I wasn't making good use of the staff and intelligence that we have within our faculty. And one of those things that I wanted to work on was just one of the simple things that we have to deal with in school, transitioning students to lunch. That was an issue for us and something that I wanted to work on. Instead of me coming up with a solution, I engaged my team leaders as soon as we came back. And the draft I've already seen has already shown how much, just challenging them with the problem tapped into their intellect. It demanded of them to come up with a solution, and I'm sure that their ultimate draft will be better than the one I would have come up with. But not only that, it was just an opportunity to excite them and get them involved. And this opportunity that Richland 2 provided by giving us this, you know, here's this physical hands-on book you can read so that we could grow leaders, and I just think, I hope that we can continue to do that in Richland 2. Thank you.
You also noticed that you have a book that was left for you, and that is one of the books that administrators read. So you have a sampling, and the bookmark that you have has a listing of all the books that they read. If you have, do you have any questions?
Any questions, comments on the board?
I have one question.
Yes, Ms. Brill.
What was the name of the book that you all read again?
The book is called Multipliers. The website is multipliersbook.com.
I don't think we have that.
There's a quick quiz. You can find out if you're a multiplier or what we would call a diminisher. And they also have accidental diminishers. So if you have a minute, take that quiz.
It's on the bookmark.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments on the board?
How much conversation did you have between you? Did y'all all tweet or... Did y'all have a conversation in other, otherwise?
We all broke up into groups that talked about our specific books, and the Multipliers group, Matt. And then when we came back as a larger group, we had more conversation about what people learn from the different books that they're in. Now, the tweets...
I'll just throw in, the Twitter conversation hasn't stopped. It has continued, and I think that's one of the most powerful things about, about this technology that we have is that we have our own hashtags, and you can carry on conversations after the meeting. And I think that's one of the ways that we can continue it.
I think as leaders, teachers, reading and demonstrating that there's joy and fun in reading is probably the best way to set an example, as opposed to just assigning books to your students, demonstrating that your student doing the exact same thing. So hats off to you guys. I love to read as well, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is public participation. No one signed up for it. However, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come in and address the board, you can feel free to do so at this time. Seeing none, thank you very much. Moving right along, next on our agenda will be voting on the executive session items. The Chair will entertain a motion on student appeals?
Mr. Chair, on student number one, we'll pull that out. Student number two recommend uphold the appeal. And the student can apply to adult it. Student number three deny the appeal. Student number four recommend white Twitter cap.
Moved by Ms. Brill, second by Ms. Anderson. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Chair will now entertain a motion on student appeal number one?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion on student number one that we deny the appeal.
Been moved by Ms. Johnson that we deny the appeal. It's been seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote? Motion passes four to three. Thank you very much.
Chair, we have the agenda here. We don't have to vote.
I asked earlier, was it included? I thought I was told it was. Was it not?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, that's what I asked. I was told that. Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Next on our agenda, under old business action requested, approval of policy, JLDOB, Dr. Ham?
Yes, I believe there may have been a correction to this. Did you make any additional corrections to this? No. Okay, it's, we're presenting it to you as is then, as you received it at the last meeting. This brings our policy in compliance with state requirements to provide epinephrine injections and emergencies.
Ms. Anderson?
Dr. Ham, did you discuss that?
Yes, we did.
My question on that is, I would think that we need to include that on, in our emergency first aid kit during the games or field trips, whatever. Because if a child gets stung by a bee or anything could happen that could cause a personal or traumatic shock, and have an adverse reaction to it, so I would like to say that included in this policy.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Ramon. One other point, we talked about what the district defines as first responders. I would assume our athletic trainers are somehow identified, or that we have a list of folks so that that's clear?
We'll come back, hold that question, we'll come back to that in just a second. That was a question I asked at the last meeting. Ms. Davis?
You're asking about the, Ms. Anderson, I heard your question, the who's gonna be training?
The list of...
The list of trainers.
Yes, ma'am.
We didn't put those out, but the nurses will train the principals, the athletic directors, and the emergency team at the school. And that may vary by position at each school, but every school has an emergency team, and so it'll be by school. But there are some standard people on that team that the nurses will train.
I just want to make sure, I think Ms. Anderson said that the athletic events, our athletic trainers are the first responders in most of those situations. I would assume that they're authorized to do that, but I don't want to overlook that group as a first responder because they represent our district when we're off-site or in other things.
And probably if we said athletic director or his desert need might cover that.
Yes, sir.
Back to Ms. Anderson's question.
The EpiPens, we are provided so many free per school, and they are designated for the school. And we'll have to look at providing them to be dispersed out because generally what we'll do is we have emergency packs that go with individual students that already have known reactor, who are known reactors. So we send those with them, but students who are not known reactors, we don't take the emergency pens because those are set for the school during the school day.
Go back and look at the policy. Let's verify the policy. We can talk about it later. I don't want to do that. But there are a couple of other things in here that we need to add, one of the symptoms.
Be careful, Ms. Anderson, I'm having trouble hearing you down here.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
A couple of other things we need to look at on here. I would have called you, but I didn't. I'm sorry. I apologize. During an anaphylactic shock, one of the first things, say, for instance, if a child is, say peanut butter or shrimp or whatever, whatever the case may be, you left out facial swelling, lips, throat, close-up tongue, gets heavy. I think those are some signs and symptoms that need to be on there. Because with the itching of the mouth, throat, you know, if Bill is sitting here itching, I may not notice that, but if I look over in his mouth, his face is swelling or his lips are swelling, I think that's a very important sign that we need to include in that. And also, the other part, I would like for it to stay somewhere in the policy. In, God forbid, if this ever happens, but while someone is administering the epinephrine, someone needs to be called to 911, the same as you would do in a CPR situation. Someone is called to 911 while somebody is administering CPR. So I would like to see 911 called in there also. Yes, ma'am, and I understand that, but I would like to add that in order for us to have the EpiPens on hand for the first day of school, we have to have the policy in place and the training done. Because if we don't have the policy, we can't put EpiPens in school for the first day. Well, if we don't have it for the first day, we could have it afterwards, right? Yes, ma'am. As long as we get it. I just would like for us to be prepared. If we're going to go this instead, I want us to be fully prepared always.
Ms. Anderson, would you be willing to approve it if it gets to that vote with the understanding that they will make those?
Of course.
Okay, just want to be clear. Okay.
Do you have a problem with that? I can't think of your name. The lead nurse. She was just making sure that you had the, not only the policy, but also the procedures. And I did verify that you had all of the documents. That included, the only thing that we can provide for you also, the actual training documents, which will go further into what the signs are, what people are supposed to, how they're supposed to respond. We didn't put all that detail in there, but there is, there are more training documents that are in place. But just, I would really like to see 911 called, same as you would do in CPR. Someone call 911 while administering the epinephrine. Can save a life.
Chairman, remember, I'm speaking to staff.
Sure, sure. Ms. Davis?
Mr. Chair, if you would allow, if I could let Donna Gattam, our lead nurse, provide further clarification regarding the training that she, and what all the background on that.
Sure.
Part of the training, because this epinephrine law is for an unknown reactor. This isn't the kids that have a known allergy with an EpiPen that we train teachers for. This is a training similar to, that we have the AEDs in all of the schools, we'll have the EpiPens, and we're utilizing the National Association of Nurses guidelines for that training. I'm a national epinephrine resource school nurse, one of three in the state of South Carolina. So we already have the curriculum developed to train staff to recognize anaphylaxis and to act. And I did not realize that it did not say call 911 in the two-page procedure.
I didn't see it in there. It is, and I called myself.
Because we took these standing orders from our old epinephrine standing orders and added in the save-act verbiage.
Oh, this is my error.
Okay. I was having a little panic attack here.
It's when I read it. I think I got hung up on something else.
Okay.
I was still hung up on the facial swelling. It's my apology. Thank you.
You have two Cs, too.
Okay, thank you.
It's two Cs.
Mr. Chairman, I don't hear anything in this discussion, and neither do they, that are contrary to the intent of this.
Right.
And so that we can have children have this as a safety measure, should we need it during the first day of schools, I'd like to request that you consider approving this under the provision that they work with Mrs. Anderson and make sure that the language is acceptable to her. If you're okay with that.
Yeah, I said yes.
I asked that earlier, and she, Ms. Anderson, said fine. So thank you for reiterating that, restating that. Any further comments from you? Okay, thank you very much. Any further comments on the board? Okay. Hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion regarding this proposed policy.
Certainly with the stipulations standing.
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Fleming, second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Anderson?
I just have one question.
Certainly.
Did the law pass that all medication had to be prescribed?
Donna, would you come up and respond to that question?
I thought we discussed that before, and then they've changed it back.
They changed it back. The Board of Nursing, Board of Pharmacy, and Board of Medical Examiners met last September and decided it was within the scope of practice for a registered nurse in the school setting to administer over-the-counter medicine with parent signature only. So we're staying with prescription medicine, herbal or homeopathic medicines, or medications that are greater than the dose on the bottle. So if a parent wants the child to have 600mg of ibuprofen and the bottle says 200, we need a physician's order to give 600.
I just wanted to bring that out so the parents would be aware that that law changed.
Right, and we put that on the webpage when it changed back in October.
Good show. Thank you.
Good question. Comments, Ms. Anderson? Thank you. Thank you, Donna, for clarifying that. Next, under new business action requested, revised policy IKC, class rankings, Dr. Ham?
Yes, Mr. Garrick will be making this report.
Mr. Chair, would you come to the podium, please, sir? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, you have policy IKC. And per, per your request, we gave you options. Uh, the one, the first one is the original policy. The second is the one that reads consecutive days, and then the third reads the days do not have to be consecutive.
Thank you, Mr. Carrick. Is everyone aboard clear on this policy? Is there any question or comment from the board? Dr. Fleming? Yes, sir.
Okay, I, okay, I'll just go ahead and make a motion to the, uh, change of the policy since consecutive days, practically for the fourth quarter of the year.
I second that, Mr. Chair.
Removed by Dr. Fleming, that we, we consider the policy which indicates consecutive days, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning?
I, I just wanted to make a, a comment. I, I feel like if the student has served the majority of the days, a hundred and thirty days, whether they're consecutive or not, that, um, you know, they've demonstrated excellence in our district regardless of whether they were here consecutive or not. That, that's just my opinion, um, that I, I feel like that deserves the credit for the work that they did. So I'll, um, I'll be voting now on that motion.
Any other comments, uh, Mr. Chair? Dr. Fleming?
I, I, I put, I would like consecutive because it's enrolled for consecutive days. I mean, and that's, I think that's a minimum, I mean, I, I, I really do, I don't see any, uh, of course, we had issues about peo- people enrolling and not enrolling. And, you know, and changing schools, coming back, and things like that, there were some issues. And you never know what those issues are. But then you never know, but this, I think this takes at least a step to, you know, takes, takes the politics out of it a little bit. And I appreciate it, and I, that's why I'm supporting it.
Other questions, comments from the board? I, I also feel that, uh, a student who's attended any one of our five outstanding high schools within our district and has performed well, should be recognized for that achievement and performance. And that it should not matter, uh, let me rephrase that, it does not matter to me if they have, uh, uh, attended more than one of our high schools in our district as long as they've remained in our district. I think a student transferring in from another district, not having a hundred and thirty consecutive days, wouldn't matter to me. But a student moving from one high school in District Two to another in District Two, I think, uh, in my opinion, should not be penalized. Uh, uh, or we send some sort of message maybe about the quality of instruction and, and, and education going on in one high school versus the other. So my issue deals more with ensuring that we show that we stand behind all five of our high schools and the equality of education that's going on in all five, five high schools. Other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Anderson?
Mr. Chair, the only reason that I think it needs to be consecutive, hypothetically, hopefully it would never happen. But in the event that it would happen, if a student finds that they're at this school and they're not going to be a valedictorian at this school, but they have an opportunity to go to the other school and they can be valedictorian, they can switch. And I don't think that's fair to the student that has gone to s- the school A for four consecutive years. And then student B can transfer from another school and then become, uh, the top-ranked person in that school. For that reason is why I'm voting consecutive. Because people, just like Dr. Fleming said, they have various reasons for changing. But that's the main stipulation. I don't think a student should work four years at their school and then someone else come in and bomb them. Is why I'm not supporting that it's not consecutive.
And, and that's a very good point, Ms. Anderson, and I, and I certainly would not argue with that. My, my concern, um, centers around, uh, hopefully that not being the premise for the, for the decision. But considering a, a situation like that, you're absolutely right. Uh, I'm certainly, uh, in favor of honoring those students who put in the hard work, uh, at their home institution. Uh, but certainly there are situations where changes occur, uh, and I do not want any student penalized also because they had to change from one school to the other, but certainly I respect your opinion. Other questions, comments on the board?
Mr. Chair, this is showing up under action request, and this is the first time we've had it, right?
That's correct.
We're supposed to have two readings before-
Not required on this. Vise, it's not required.
It's not, it's not a new policy.
Not a new policy.
It's a revision.
Two reasons not required. Other questions, comments on the board? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Waiting on somebody, here, talking to you. You know, sometimes I run back out of the, uh, uh, policy itself.
Happens a lot.
Oh, yes, okay, here it comes.
Motion passes four-three, thank you very much. Next on the agenda under new business or action requested, assessment accountability report, Dr. Hamm?
Yes, since we last met and Mr. Potts gave you the data snapshot update, some of the state assessment results have been publicly released. He'd like to brief you on those, and then Mrs. Gregory will be following up with some action steps that we plan to take response to this course.
Mr. Chair, members of the board and Dr. Hamm, recently the South Carolina Department of Education released the results for the PAST assessment and the ASAP exam. Um, the PAST assessment has been the state's, uh, assessment since two thousand nine, measuring state standards in grades three through eight for ELA, math, science, social studies and writing. And the ASAP exam have been used for nearly three decades as South Carolina's, uh, exit exam. In your packet, you'll find summary charts that help to display how rich and two students compare against South Carolina students as well as how South Car- or how rich and two students have, uh, scored over the last few years. These charts help to show the strong performance of our elementary schools and also show areas where we need growth. Highlights of this year's, uh, uh, PAST assessment is a strong growth in writing for elementary students as well as, uh, performance growth in math and, uh, for elementary students and for middle school students. You'll also notice that ASAP scores for ELA and math had, um, some large dips, especially in the math assessment. These dips mirror what we've seen, uh, at the state level, um, and districts throughout the state. Starting the school year, students in grades three through eight will no longer take the past ELA and math exams. The state has yet to decide what this new assessment will be. Um, recently, the ASAP exam, uh, was, um, eliminated. Um, in replacing that with college and career readiness exams, the ACT work keys assessment will be meeting the career readiness assessment. Nancy Gregory and I will be updating you on that in just a moment. At this time, there hasn't been no release for the ESA accountability grades or for report card grades. Those are not expected until later this fall. Mr. Chair, if you wish, Nancy Gregory will be coming up and giving her perspective from teaching and learning.
Before we do that, let's see if we have any questions for you, Jeff. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you. Nancy?
First, I wanted to start with some commendations, um, that overall our elementary PAST scores were higher than the state. And in particular, wanted to point out the elementary writing and math scores and also middle school writing. Um, we have given you a list of actions broken out by elementary, middle and high schools, but want to assure you that we are building a student-centered, standards-based system to monitor the implementation of student learnings and also their assessments. In addition, we have, um, mentioned to you in the actions about a balanced literacy model for K-five and high school with a middle school in the works, where we are getting clear on teacher expectations and what literacy looks like in richly two classrooms, working with teachers to deepen their content knowledge. And that's not just in ELA, but it's across the content areas, especially in math. Um, you'll notice for middle school, one of the other things I wanted to highlight for you is one of Dr. Hamm's nine priorities from, um, her retreat was middle school success. And we are in the process of organizing a middle school task force or committee that is broader than any of the groups that we've had before. If you remember, we reported to you in the past about our transition groups and their work. But again, this will be broader across community, parents, schools, administrators, uh, and again, a little bit broader than what we've done in the past. Any questions?
Questions, comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Manning?
I don't have anything immediate other than, um, I would really like a little bit of a deeper dive into this, um, demographics, uh, students who maybe, um, started out in similar areas, growth patterns. I, I think there's just a deeper dive that I'm gonna need to see to, see where our problem areas are and what we're doing to resolve it and what sort of growth we've seen with, uh, some of those particular students and populations. Um, so no- nothing that you can address today, but it's-
And we are doing that with our teams, I think we address that on the front, um, that we have district teams and they will be meeting with school leadership. We are drilling down to actual teachers and, um, working with schools there.
Dr. Fleming?
Well, this must be, maybe Mr. Potts' question, um, is there any predictability of these, you see, as we're testing now or our systems now? Could you predict some of this? I'm just, just saying, it's a, it's a big, I mean-
Well, we, we always, I, I think it's-
I know you tried to.
It's, it's not, it's not atypical to see scores within our own student population following that of the state. Um, we saw some of that with the PAST examination this year and with ASAP. I think, I think we all were a little worried about the fact that we are teaching, um, um, Common Core standards, new South Carolina standards in ELA and math. Um, and yet we didn't have a completely redesigned examination to address those. So that was a concern, I think, uh, throughout the year. In terms of predicting, that's pretty difficult to do, but-
What about a map testing, what about laser mapping? I mean, I mean, you could do that, is that, is that, would that have helped to predict or somewhat?
One of the differences about the map examination versus, let's say, the PAST examination is, uh, the map examination is an A-grade level assessment and it's used really to look at student performance along a continuum that, uh, from grades essentially two through eight, uh, that measure really, um, students' performance at a national level and doesn't really address specifically South Carolina standards at a grade level, so.
Okay, here's, here's a question. Now that Common Core, we have submitted, we have any schools we're, we're teaching. What about the schools that don't teach it? Is there, if you like ours or other s- s- uh, districts like ours that don't teach it? And is there a way to see if our standards or, you know, if they correlated to the past stats? And like you said, you don't know if they did or not exactly. I'm sure, uh, Mrs. Gregory has an idea. Uh, I'm just saying, if our systems don't match up to our, you know, to our curriculum and our standards and, you know, it's very difficult to, uh, make clarity out of, I'm just, this, this, again, this is my fifth set of standards in twenty years, so. I, I saw this on my hands sometimes, these things, but we, unfortunately, we are, we are engaged against what someone that, which you put up with. Whether you call it playing the game, whether you call it t- I mean, teaching the standards, however you call it. I just want my shit renewed, I need to do it, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, question from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Anderson?
I don't know if this is a fair question to ask either of you because you may not have been here at the time. Some years ago, uh, they changed, uh, Dr. Hamm, when middle school teachers had to be certified in certain areas. Can we tell, was that from a little child I've got? Can we tell the difference in test scores from that change from back then up until now? There been a study done to see if it was effective or not? Is, would, how difficult would that be to, to give a small amount of data just to see if it was effective or not? Because we put people through a lot of changes, uh, to get certified, they couldn't teach in different areas because of that. And I just wanna know, how do we benefit from it? Is there anybody that we have?
I think, I think it'd be-
Yeah, they did away with it, I just wanted to know if it was effective.
To look at that on the local level, just in that amount of time, the amount of transits we have among our teachers, going back and finding out whether they were highly qualified before the highly qualified requirements came into place with the changes, with a sample, the size that I think we probably have left at this point in time. But it would be something we could research probably in the national research, there's probably been studies about the effect of that at the national level.
Well, I wouldn't want to take the style of time to do that. I was just curious to know, uh, is that still in place? That they have to be qualified, how they qualify, is, is that still, well, if it's still in place, then I would like to see if it's e- effective. Why would we have something in place if it's not being effective? Well, it's the law, but I think we could challenge the law if it's not correct. I mean, it's, it's not benefiting the students nor the teachers. Why do we keep it in law, in, in, in law? We need to lobby our legislators to get it changed. Finally, we got rid of the, um, exit exam, then we could get rid of that too. Um, I think it's imperative that, I wouldn't want you to put it on as a top priority, but I think it's something we need to look at.
But, Mr. Potts, and I take a look and think about what the possibilities might be.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Anderson. I also think that looking at sort of the various demographic groups and how those numbers have changed so drastically, I want us to make sure, sort of echoing a little bit of what Mr. Manning said, make sure that we're paying close enough attention to the kind of shifts that are occurring. And if in fact, they represent a disproportionate number of students who are being adversely affected by, uh, the performance on, on the test. And, and so I'm not sure that we have probably done that yet. I'd like for us to look at that. I'm not trying to blame anybody or any group, but I want us to look at how our transient students are performing. I wanna look at, I want us to look at how our free reduced lunch students are performing. And then I want us to look at, uh, the students who are, are, are repeaters, how they are performing. Students who are new to the district, how they're performing. Because I think that they are sort of, I think Dr. Fleming somewhat alluded to it. When you look at the populations that are coming into our district and where they may or may not be, I think Ms. Anderson asked that question, I think. And when they, when they arrive, I want us to make sure that if they're not at the level that they need to be in order to be performing proficiently, we should know that on the front end and then develop some very serious strategies. And that's not a question of you, Jeff, I guess I'm talking more to the, the general teaching population, um, uh, that we develop some very specific targeted strategies to make sure that those students' needs are being addressed and met and not just write it off because they're transient, because they have free reduced lunch, because they, this is their first year in addition, that sort of thing. And I, and I know we've looked at that once before, how students perform who start with us by the time they reach third grade versus how students perform who show up the first time in third grade. I, let's pull that back out, let's look at that again, because I think that it, it continues on because they're not performing on par in third grade. Obviously, when they get to sixth grade, it's a, it's a perpetual cycle. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about this, yes, commendable comments, but also areas that we need to pay some very close attention to. Other questions, comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Manning?
Um, and I wanna make sure we look across the whole spectrum, sure, because I think we have students, um, that are also gifted. Are they performing maybe on par with where we've performed in the past or need to? So we need to look at that whole spectrum, because I think that, that's big. And, um, I would hope that the board would welcome some very innovative, different strategies. Sometimes we make these little, you know, minor steps or change, tweak something here or there. And, and if it's appropriate to do more than a tweak, I wanna know. And I wanna know what some of those options are and pilot them and see where they can have impact on the district, whether that be K through eight or, um, change the way we do, you know, grade levels or, I mean, any number of different major changes or shifts in order to have that impact to the- that impact to the populations that we need to give the most focus or roots or whatever it is.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Other questions, comments on the board? Thank you very much, Jeff. Thank you very much, Nancy. Appreciate that. Next on our agenda is a report on work keys. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, as you know, the state has adopted work keys as one of our high school assessments, and Mr. Potts and Ms. Gregory are gonna tell you about that as well.
As Dr. Hamm said, starting in the 2014-15 school year, students in 11th grade and up will be taking ACT work keys assessment. Work keys is a job skills assessment that was developed by ACT. Helps to measure real world skills that employers believe are critical to job success. Student scores from the ACT work keys exam can be used to obtain a national career certificate, career readiness certificate. The career readiness certificate proves to employers that students at the certificate bearer has the necessary skills to work in their business by identifying strengths and measuring workplace skills. There are three, there's a set, three assessments that students will take when they take the work keys assessment in South Carolina, reading for information, applied mathematics, and locating for information. Based on these scores, students can achieve one of the following certificate levels, bronze, silver, gold, and platinum. At this time, Ms. Gregory again can come up and speak to you a little bit more about the work keys assessment.
I'm gonna talk to you for a few minutes about how we're preparing our students in Richland two for work keys. We put an advisory committee together, and historically, we have been given work keys for over ten years in the areas of career prep, adult ed, CAT, and special aid, ed, I'm sorry. We learned that we had a wealth of resources in Richland two, including human resources. In fact, Erin Armstrong, that is our career prep lead teacher, is here, and she is one of our human resources. We learned that that was very important because we have people that can actually train and work with our folks that are here in Richland two. We have access to a practice test, key train, online tutorial. We have a free license for every high school so that all of our students can have online tutorial help, and even a career ready, career ready 100, 101 curriculum. So, we have many, many resources. Today, we met with high school principals and we started talking about implementation plans for the actual work keys test. So, again, we have put things in motion with an advisory committee, met with high school principals, and this will be ongoing, but we feel like we have a wealth of resources here, so we have started, not just waiting for the state training, but trying to be proactive as we know that this is coming probably in the spring, perhaps April. What we also have provided for you is, is we have a link for you, and I think Mr. Potts is going to show you some sample items, and we're going to talk about an opportunity for you to take the test.
So, let me just take a moment to show you two examples of questions that, or sample questions for the work keys. This is a level five locating information item, and the item itself is forces students to look at multiple layers within a specific chart and to be able to answer questions based upon the analysis of that chart. You guys working through it?
Are you going to give us the answers? I mean, I worked on it and I want to know what my answer is.
Let's see, speed of forty-five knots at twenty, is that twenty-five?
Yes, I was right.
A level six applied math question I'm also gonna share with you, and this one, actually, if you notice, it involves some considerable reading and to be able to look at, oh, is that the same one? Well, a little copy and paste didn't help me out a whole lot there. But, but as Nancy Gregory was saying, there's some instructions within the document that really is an invitation for you to take the work keys, and I would invite everybody within this room tonight and Richland two community to go out and take the work keys assessment to see what it is that the businesses within the community are really asking of our district in terms of what our students are able to know and of us as employees within Richland County. Mr. Chair?
Questions, comments on the board?
Chair?
Ms. Manning?
I'm in trouble, I may find out that I'm unemployable and that I'm a zombie maker and a diminisher all on the same day, so...
That's good.
Well, when I, Mr. Chair, when I...
Ms. Anderson?
When I did this little test, I thought, surely I can do a little bit of math. But then I was sitting here and I asked Dr. Davis, did he get it? And he said he was working on it. So, I was almost embarrassed to show him my answer because I didn't want to be embarrassed to be wrong, but I was right. So, I think that is really good. I know we talked about this in a workshop, I can't remember some people together, and James, you may have been with me when we talked about the work keys, but it's, I think it's gonna be a valuable, that it will be valuable for our students in the workforce moving into the workforce.
And you've got more information on the assessments themselves about the three main types of assessments, and I think Mr. Price, I know that Mary Page Voice is in the audience and that they have taken the work keys assessments themselves, and I think they can tell you they're, they're pretty tough. Mr. Price?
Yeah, and they're timed, and they're timed tests as well.
Yes, and they are timed tests, about fifty-five minutes. But we do have listed for you, Mr. Cunningham at Adult Ed, the WR Rogers Center, has graciously offered if you want to stop by and take one or any of the test. The times are on your document as well as the contact information, so we'd love for you to actually see what the work keys assessment looks like.
Other questions, comments on the board? I guess the concern for me is that I probably couldn't pass a test that a plumber could pass, but the public's perception of work keys does not rank it in the past, has not ranked it up on the academic scale high. How are we gonna address that issue?
That is changing. In fact, Erin, Erin, I'm gonna ask you to come up and answer that question for us because she has worked very closely with the community on this. We talked about this with principals a little bit earlier today.
See, if you could ask that one more time, because my brain's going...
I said, I couldn't pass a test that a plumber could pass, and, and work keys has probably been seen in that category in the past, very career, not academic. So, how do we change perception of the significance of it, its results academically?
Well, I think what is important is that our, the businesses in our community have got to have the buy-in that, that work keys has, and our faculty and staff and our students have to see that there is the importance of this work keys, that when they leave high school, there is, they're gonna leave with a certificate, the national career readiness certificate, and they can actually go to these businesses, and when they apply, they're gonna have something that, you know, none of, except for Mr. Price and Mary Page in this room have. You know, they're gonna have that certificate. So, there is the buy-in in the community, there is that academic perspective that you are gonna have to have. Midlands Tech, their first jobs program, you have to have work keys, and we're offering it to our students for free. You know, South Carolina is now requiring it for all of our students. There's no accountability, you know, set in place yet, but there is no reason our students cannot walk out of here with a bronze. Every one of our students with a bronze, if not higher.
I guess, let me rephrase, let me rephrase the question then. I guess the concern I have is that students won't take it seriously, and, and because they don't see that as an academic indicator or measure, that's why I use a plumber's analogy. The students in our gifted and talented program will see this as analogies to taking a plumber's test. So, how do we change that? That's what I'm really asking.
I think we have to challenge our students to, you know, to get that, hey, you know, even Mr. Price didn't get a platinum, and, you know, and challenge them, I'm sorry. I, you know, I probably couldn't even get a gold or a silver, I'm so bad at math. But I think we have to challenge our students from, you know, the ones that are here all the way up to our honors and AP students to, to come out with that, you know, those academics and, you know, how many of y'all can get that platinum? And offer them incentives, even if it's, you know, free Chick-fil-A sandwich or, you know, whatever that it is. And all, but it's, I think the, the more that the teachers and our community buys into it, the more relevance that the students are gonna see in it. I, I love it, I mean, I see the relevance. The students in career prep that have been taking it for ten years plus see the relevance in it because they, they can go into the businesses with that certificate.
Thank you.
Also, we think the emphasis from Governor Haley and the pressure from the business community because more and more businesses in our community are requiring this. There are some local school districts that we talked about that are requiring it for their workforce and setting a model for what the expectation is for students.
I don't want to use the word sanction, but will there be any consequences imposed if students don't take it seriously and don't do well?
Statewide, we don't know what this is gonna look like in terms of accountability. I think a question may be within our own district, how are we gonna view work keys for our students and potentially our, our own workforce, so...
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments on the board?
Thank you. Ms. Manning? Just real quick, our charter high school's been using this for two years, three years And I know, we've been using it in the district, right, with our career prep as well.
Okay, career prep, special ed, adult ed, they've been using it for over ten years.
Thank you very much. Thank you, folks. Next on our agenda is a report on the Youth Career Connect Grant. Dr. Hamm?
I think that, you know, there's work keys followed by the Youth Career Connect Grant is a sign of how important education's role is and how the expanding need to have schools support both college and career readiness and workforce development, how that, that's increasing over time. So, we are very fortunate to be in a partnership for the Youth Career Connect Grant. I'm gonna ask Dr. Arlene Makoudas to introduce our speaker.
Good evening, Chairman Jackson, Dr. Hamm, members of the board and colleagues. I'd actually like to invite Mary Page Voice to come up. She is in academics and she is overseeing the CAT grant, so I'll turn it over to Mary Page.
Thank you, and just so Keith is not the only one outed, I could not get the platinum either, and I was very offended when Bobby Cunningham said, nobody has ever gotten the platinum who has tested at Rogers Center. And so, I really tried, I sweated, I used every minute of time on those tests, and I got the gold because I could not, I don't know, even know why I didn't get the platinum, but Cleve took it too. He was with us that day. He's one of the brave souls that went in. I think we all went in pretty unprepared, Mr. Jackson, for the level of rigor of that test, and I'm not kidding when I say I was sweating by the end of it, because I didn't want to be embarrassed. But, good evening, members of the board and Chair, Mr. Chairman and Dr. Hamm and executive staff. Some things, sometimes really good things just happen to you, and working with this grant has been a really good thing. I have met some good people, you know, we partnered with Lawrence County, that has been a delight, and the folks that have come on board to work with us for this grant are just really good people, and I'm glad to introduce two of them to you tonight and then hear from our principals over our schools that are part of this grant. Mr. Jackson, you already introduced Betsy Carpenter, but Betsy, again, is in charge of accountability metrics, and she is our data collector, and she's going to keep us on track. And to invite to speak is Ann Presley, and Ann, come on up. Ann used to be in academics for Greenville County, and she applied to be the executive director of the CAT grant, and we were very lucky to find Ms. Presley. She's wonderful, and she will speak to you about the basics of the grant. She is sharing her time, halftime between Richland two and Lawrence County.
Good evening, Dr. Hamm, members of the board. As you've already heard, the vision behind the CAT Youth Career Connect Grant is to motivate and empower young people to make a positive difference within their communities and in their academic and professional careers through leadership, creativity, and action. Tonight, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to briefly share with you how CAT's four key components, integrated academics, exposure to the world of work, employer engagement, and counseling component combine to shape the daily experiences of CAT students. We get a lot of questions as we go from school to school. We're currently in four, four high schools. We're in Lawrence 55, Lawrence High School, we're in Clennan High School in Lawrence District 56, and we're in two of your high schools, Ridgeview, and we're in Westwood High School. So, we get a lot of questions as we go from school to school. What, what does this mean for the student, for, for their daily experiences? So, this evening, I hope to be able to speak to a few of, a few of those, those experiences that they'll have as we move into the beginning of this, of this grant. Integrated academic and career-focused learning, just the first technology. Here we go. Integrated academic and career-focused learning allows CAT students to answer the question, why do I need to learn this? As a part of the CAT program, a student functions as a member of a small learning community comprised of sixty-two students who share the same interests and are seeking to answer the same driving questions. Through common planning, teachers develop an innovative and integrated curriculum defined by project-based learning that allows students to make connections between their activities in the classroom and their future careers in the real world. And it is about those connections between what am I doing in my classroom and how does this apply to my next step in college and career and where I'm headed. This connection brings relevancy and ignites interest and enthusiasm. How many times, as a student, unfortunately, have we in the past asked ourselves while we were sitting, listening to a teacher or taking part in something, why am I learning this? Why do I have to do this? How will this apply? Finally, they're able to earn industry-recognized credentials and post-secondary credits while in high school, giving them an advantage regardless of the post-high school route they choose. Employer engagement. Through mentoring internships and registered apprenticeships, employers are able to directly engage with CAT students. Employers are support, employers also support teachers as they develop real-world project-based learning experiences for students. Let me speak just real quickly about this. You'll hear reference as, as more information and the excitement of CAT, of CAT, the CAT program is shared with you in the months and years to come. You're gonna hear this term, driving question, driving question. One of the basic tenets of the CAT program is the project-based learning, and I'm, I was pleased to learn more about Richland two's focus on project-based learning. You have a district-wide focus on that, and it's very, very supported in your district. Project-based learning, one of the basic tenets of that is a driving question. Students begin with a question that then drives their, their study, their work as a group and everything else. So, that, that is the, the core of project-based learning. So, those driving questions are what you'll hear about in the months and years to come. These experiences begin, as I said, with a driving question generated from a real-world problem that is presented to the students, and the folks from the workforce will be assisting teachers in providing them with information to develop those questions as they present those to the students. CAT students then utilize the state-prescribed curriculum to arrive at solutions to the prob, to the problems presented. The connection between what they are learning in high school and how it applies in the real world of work is a powerful incentive for students and research-based. Individualized career and academic counseling. Counselors and career development facilitators will play an active role in the lives of CAT students as students benefit from the services of a dedicated guidance counselor, which is, you'll hear the term career counselor, that's, that's their title, as well as a career development facilitator. Together, these two individuals will provide one-on-one group support to determine college and career paths that are prescriptive to the talents and needs of each student. So, there's no blanket prescribed, this is what you should do. It's based on an individual, student by student, set of needs. Finally, exposure to the world of work begins in year one of the CAT program. Speakers, field trips, job shadowing, and community service are only a few of the experiences that will bring relevancy and perspective to the work of CAT students. And now, we'll invite the principals of Ridgeview and Westwood to just speak to you a moment about how things are going at their school and the level of excitement.
Good evening. I know I speak for Brenda and my...
Good evening. I know I speak for Brenda myself both as we just talk about how exciting this CAT grant is for us and for our students because it really helps us out in two areas that we really want to see our students excel. One is the engineering area, a part of STEAM or STEMS, and the other is computer science. And uh, once we got the grant, we we went to work. And uh, one of the things that we did was for these rising ninth graders, we looked at our IGPs and we invited uh, all of those students who had an interest in either computer science or engineering to a meeting. We pulled together, uh, you know, the resources. Dr. Presley came and was a, was a part there and we really talked about what we were gonna do for these students. You know, with the career development facilitator in order to bring in those real-world experiences. We've already started working with, uh, how do we develop those uh, uh, internships and, you know, that that place in the business? We've, uh, you know, we're partnering with uh, Apprenticeship Carolina where they're looking at our curriculum and how it matches up to the workplace. I know at Westwood right now, uh, on the engineering side, uh, we, we have a full complement of students, thirty-one, and we have a waiting list. On the computer science side, we're just about three short of having a full group of students. So we're really excited that we're gonna be able to get these students in, you know, and talk to them starting as ninth graders about what it means to, for the engineering part and for the real-world experience.
Um, the only thing that I would add, because like Ralph, our students are equally excited. Finally, when students say, do you offer engineering, or parents say, do you offer computer science or the engineering cluster at Ridgeview, we're able to say yes. So our parents and students are very excited that we have these two STEM programs um that will be a part of our curriculum next year. When I think about the teachers who were selected particularly for Ridgeview, you have to have the right person when you begin a program. One of the things that I wanted, okay, engineering teacher, has to be someone, of course, who knows the knowledge. I would love to have someone who has been a practicing engineer but who's just decided to come and work with young people. So I kept interviewing, we kept interviewing and I said, oh my goodness, I kept getting a little nervous because lots of people who, former engineers who knew their content, but they just didn't have that it factor. And so um, Kate, Career and Technology Education Department Chairperson and Dr. Thomas who worked with Kate Department, they said, you gotta have the right person. I was getting a little nervous and I said, you guys, come on, they got the content, we're gonna be able to work with them. They said, no, not yet. And I'm so glad I listened because we finally hired an engineer who has worked with the Paxton-Patterson curriculum and students. She has a passion for t, for students and learning. Her name is Susan Dixon and I know that she's going to take this engineering programs to hikes that I can't even imagine. So that's my one takeaway. The other thing I would say, our Kate teachers and the administrators, they are so excited with picking out furniture. What kind of furniture is needed for this collaboration space that students will be able to go in? Twenty-first century learns. When you think about kids, what kind of furniture do they need to be creative, to collaborate, to communicate? So the administrators who work very closely with this project, they are so excited as well about furniture. And I will also add, um, Dr. Presley, she has been very easy to work with. She is um, a great project director so far and we've had lots of, I've had lots of experience from Richland District Two and I think she's a phenomenal person to work with. So thank you, Ms. Presley, for making this easy.
We'll entertain any questions.
Questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
Um, so I've heard both of you as principals talk about the students who are interested in engineering and uh, those fields. What about the students who aren't coming forward at first? How are we introducing them to some of these ideas and maybe getting them interested? I know particularly in technology, if you are in that field or you read any of the magazines and look at the demographics of who works there, um, it certainly does not represent all of our populations in any way, shape, or form. So.
You know, Mr. Manning, one thing we did last year, uh, as part of the Hour of Code, it was a national movement. We brought all of our kids out for this hour into the hallways and our teachers, uh, we prepared all of our teachers for this to look at the, uh, you know, the industry and talks about IT, computer science, and they did something, students did something. And then they came back in and on our television show, we had a panel of people from, you know, from the, from the industry that came in and talked about, you know, where the jobs were gonna be, you know, how do you get the jobs? We, what were the qualifications? So we're just really bringing to light the, the need for our computer programmers and all, uh, you know, the next ten years. So this fit perfectly right into what we were doing. So we're, we're using as many resources in our school to try to get those words out uh, to students about the uh, the jobs that are gonna be there and, and what it takes to get them.
Um, the only other thing that I would add is that, yes, we looked at the students who were identified based on their IGPs. But what we did, we also, we sent it out via our, um, at the vol, at the View blog. We also use newsletters. Anytime we have parents or student group, we talk about the new program. Any parent meeting, any student meeting. So we're always saying, if you're interested, come and see us. Um, and then also we have some of our counselors, because one of the things that I learned um at the last professional development where each of the high school principals was, there was a, the federal um accountability agent. He said he was the kind of kid who, if you looked at him, he was at risk, at risk of not being successful. But one teacher saw something in him and that inspired him to want to work with technology. So we're also looking at asking our teachers, do you have that kind of kid? Who's the kid that you would recommend? And we also are offering other types of courses because they're teaching the engineering courses, but we have some of the fun things like robotics and maybe some of the other schools have, have had the opportunity to offer those, but this is the first time we have that at Ridgeview. So we're trying to offer electives and courses that can pull students into um some of these career clusters that they didn't, never thought that they would have had an interest in.
But um, probably three or four years ago, we started looking with Ridgeview at the Paxton-Patterson engineering curriculum and, and that's the one we've chosen for the grant. There are lots of great engineering curriculums, but one thing we loved about this one was exactly what you said. How do you get kids interested who don't know they're interested? And what we love about is it starts with breaking concrete and just the kind of the hands-on stuff and materials science and getting kids to do some of the stuff that they really wanna do to get their hands and into experiments and project-based learning. And we think that because we do have this teacher now and she only has to teach CAT grants once or twice a day, she'll have some other periods where um, she can expose other students at, you know, at Ridgeview, some of the older students who are not in that freshman class to the same opportunities. And, and like Brenda said, the extra things like robotics. So it's gonna bring great opportunities to the CAT students, but other students um at these schools as well.
I'd encourage us to continue along that route and also really think about our elementary and middle. Um, students start the interest young and the possibilities of those career choices. I know that that's, those are growing areas within the country and places that I would certainly like to see um that interest develop where we don't normally see that develop and uh grow those students. And then my, my other question was, as far as just killing teachers with, you know, STEM grants and CAT grants and all the different teaching methodologies that go into that. How, how do you fold all that in so that we achieve what we're trying to do and not overwhelm teachers with just a, a large volume of methodologies and tactics?
I think the one benefit that I have is having a teacher who is already taught and is experienced with the Paxton-Patterson curriculum. And if you look at that curriculum, it lends itself to being problem and project-based. Students are giving a, some type of problem and then the learning occurs. So she has lots of experience with being a facilitator and leading students um rather than just giving them the answer. So for me, I think I, I'm fortunate in that I have an, an experienced teacher who understands twenty-first century skills and those concepts.
So it's just one teacher? It's not like a teacher who's leading other teachers?
Yes, I have one, yes.
One person and that's the same?
Yes.
Okay. I was thinking it was more widespread that we were.
And we got lucky in that the focus of the grant was project-based learning and that's what we were already doing as far as layering. So we didn't have to layer anything else on top of the teachers. But um, the only other thing I want to tell y'all that we haven't talked about is we've wrapped in summer experiences. So these kids are gonna get um Disney Youth Leadership Programs. They're going to get Imagineering Programs. They're going to get Clemson Engineering Camp Programs. We are really excited about not only preparing kids for H1B fields, but making them uh leaders. And they're gonna get to go to South Carolina Business Week Camp. Um, and we just feel like we have packed this with opportunities to grow these children into great, not only uh people to fill these necessary careers, but be leaders in those fields.
Other questions or comments on the board?
I just.
Ms. Anderson.
Ralph, what about at your school? Were you fortunate enough to get a teacher that you were that excited about at Westwood?
Oh, absolutely. We, uh, we, you know, we already had the engineering part in place. So we were already on this path there. One of the, the area we got to grow was the computer science part. And so we got to add a computer science teacher who was going to be working with that. And we'd already kind of started down this, uh, this path last year, like I talked about with the Hour of Code, where we wanna go, where we wanna see kids uh, project, where the jobs are gonna be in the future. So, you know, we're really excited that, you know, that this grant really, you know, fell into our laps. We were already talking about project-based learning. And uh, we, we did uh, just uh, these past two weeks, we uh, did three days of training with about sixty teachers in, uh, with the Buck Institute on project-based learning. So it's not only helping us, you know, in just this small cohort of kids, it's gonna help us throughout, you know, throughout a whole school.
But you've not hired your.
Yes, we've hired, we've hired our teacher already.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're rocking and rolling and ready to go.
Very good, thank you.
We, we wanted to have a speaker from Blue Cross here, but she was not able to come, but just the, the business community is very excited. We have a conference call tomorrow, Ralph and I do, with ITology. They wanna know what more can they do, what resources do we need? And people are just very excited that we're gonna be graduating this many kids in computer science and um with that background and having AP Computer Science on their resume. And we are, we're thrilled about it and, and so is our community.
Any other questions, comments on the board? What you've really done is add, add some real meaning to the whole career cluster, career clusters piece. And that was talked about eight, nine years ago at the state level, but they didn't give any money, didn't fund it. So thank you, Arlene, for finding some money to make it happen. I'm real excited that we're partnering with, with Lawrence School Leadership. I love Dr. Laura Cosella extremely well. Known her for years, a superintendent there, and I know that uh, our relationship with them is only gonna enhance now our relationship with Clemson that we thought we had moving down a positive road and got, got derailed. So I'm real excited about that. Great job and I, I look forward to great things. Had a chance to meet your engineering teacher uh at Ridgeview at the NUTA Two and uh, and we stole her from Lexington Five. I was real excited when she told me that. Other questions or comments on the board? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the agenda items for next meeting. Our next board meeting will be August twenty-sixth at Rice Street Elementary. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, sir. We will have special recognition, student focus, a back-to-school report, an update on fundraisers and competitive food sales. That is um the federal requirements for nutrition and uh, how it affects food sales. That's still evolving, but we'll give you an update. A report on the Race to the Top Grant and then an update on the Long Range Facility Study.
Jack, isn't the Long Range Facility Study moving to September though instead of the twenty-sixth of August? Okay, so that one.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay, great, thank you. That is the only change I'm aware of. Other suggestions for items for next board meeting agenda or future board meeting agenda? Any other suggestions? Hearing none. Thank you very much. At this time, we have our second public participation session. Uh, no one signed up for it as well. However, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, we allow you to do so at this time. Feel free to come forward. Okay, thank you. And as we wrap up, at this time, we'll have board and superintendent comment. Mrs. Anderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really enjoyed all the reports tonight. Um, and the book, Influencer. Started scanning, thought it looks like it's gonna be very interesting. And the multiplier, I think I wanna take that exam and see where I fall in, uh, category I fall into. But each report tonight that I listened to, I was very uh glad to hear. And uh, I just wish everyone a happy, um, safe return school year. We did get it straight in our minutes that school starts on the twentieth, right? So we will be uh, out there on the twentieth. And I wanna say a personal note to uh Dr. McDaniel, we were happy to see you come back, sad to see you go. Under the circumstances, I know it's gonna work well for you because I think it's where you came from, to Oregon. Right, so we uh send our blessings with you and your family and thank you for the job well done while you're back here in District Two.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Dr. Fleming?
Again, I want to reiterate, I hope you have a safe and uh, you know, start of school. You know how I tell how it's a great start is when I don't get a call at six o'clock in the morning. Wanna know where their bus is, you know, so that's, Jack, that's a great start, okay? Yeah, I mean, we talked about health issues, academic standings, we talked about scores, test scores, accountability. You know what we're talking about. And every one of us opportunity and um, and it's good to see us with this grant to give our students more and more opportunities. Every year we start school. That's, that's great. It's pretty much it. I just hope that Fred, you've been one of the greatest resources I've ever had in my tenure here. If you didn't know it, you'd find it. So I appreciate that. Thanks. And that was, as a board member, that's, that's great to know. I'll miss you.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Dr. Alexis Johnson?
Yes, I would just like to wish everyone a super start of the school year and want to remind our teachers that as we greet our students on the very first day of school, remember that the parents sent us their best. So let's make sure we remember that phrase throughout the entire school year.
Thank you, Dr. Alexis Johnson. Ms. Brill?
Um, also wanna wish uh Dr. McDaniel good luck. Now you're being Oregonian, is that right? Am I saying that right? Or Oregonian. And I used to work for Mark Hatfield, so I have a warm place for Oregon. It's a beautiful place. You'll enjoy it. Did a great job for us, so if you need a reference, good luck with your children and putting them in school. I'm sure you're working on that. Um, look forward to the first day of school. It's next Wednesday. I hope there are minimal problems and that all goes well. It's an exciting day and I hope to try to join Debbie, um, keep up with her first day. I've visited Lake Carolina upper campus during Media Day and it looks absolutely fabulous. And they're working on the sidewalk connecting lower school with upper school. So it's a great new concept for Richland Two and I'm really excited that, that it's happening like that and it looks really good. And I think the cooperation from the community and the parents is just everything that we would want and expect. Exciting news about um all the reports tonight and I think the CAT grant is really great. So as I was reading, it's New York City, Los Angeles, and then South Carolina. So we're in good company with. Denver too, don't forget my home. Denver, with some outstanding uh communities. So thank you all for your hard work on all that.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Ms. Specter?
I just wanna echo everything everyone else has said. And Brad, I wanna wish you good luck, you and your family. They have a great education there, as they did in Richland Two. Um, and I also wanna wish everybody a good day of, um, year going back to school.
Thank you, Ms. Specter. Mr. Manning?
Mr. Chair, as everybody else said, I, I hope you have a great first day of school. Uh, for me as a parent, my daughter will be in the fourth grade this year, so I'll be experiencing the first day along with all the other parents in the district. Uh, Dr. McDaniel, wish you the best. It'll be, I think we have a rezoning in our future with Elementary Twenty and we'll be doing that for the first time. My, my experience, first time without you. I know you won't miss that. So good luck to you. Um, I also wanted to uh just read a, a few short comments that I have. Um, as many of you know, uh, Dr. Hamm went through her review and had a commendable uh review from the board. Um, and so I just wanted to make a few comments on that, um, as an individual, uh, not as um, the board as a whole. But um, Dr. Hamm is a parent and is an individual board member. I want to say thank you for what you have accomplished over the last year. Your style of leadership has been a breath of fresh air for me, for district staff, for the community, and for our students. You have brought a level of focus to the district with your four squares of joy, character, academics, and community that is taking Richland Two to the next level. I appreciate the joy that you have brought to the district, which is demonstrated by the standing ovations that you have continued to receive throughout the year. As Robert Frost says, we have miles to go, but I look forward to working with you as we continue uh, forward to the future of our great district. Thank you.
You, Ms. Manning. Dr. Hamm?
Well, I'm looking forward to welcoming our teachers back tomorrow. I'm excited about that. I hope they've had a chance to recharge over the summer.
I hope they've had a chance to recharge over the summer, although I know they've been in professional development, they've been managing and working with our students all summer long, but still, it's always nice to have that beginning of the school year and an exciting time for all of us. Of course, a week from tomorrow, we will be welcoming back over twenty-seven thousand students. That's exciting too. I'm looking forward to seeing them back in our classrooms, and I know this is going to be the best school year ever. In fact, our plan is to make this a blockbuster year. That's our theme for the year. I do want to remind anybody in the public who's listening to this to kind of take it slow for the first few weeks. I hope, be patient, I hope you don't get any calls about buses. I would bet on it, but I hope that you don't. But, there's always more traffic, bus schedules are always more complicated, there is getting used to the beginning of the school year. We've always gotten through it well, but everybody needs to be patient, watch out for children and buses those first few days of school. So, let's make children's safety a priority for the first week or so. Well, it always needs to be a priority, but in particular, keep that at the forefront of your mind, and just sort of take a breath, smile, we will all get through it, the lines at school get shorter, it'll all be good. And then the last thing I want to do is echo the sentiments of the board and say a sincere thank you to Fred McDaniel. We have known each other and worked together for a long time. I will be personally sorrowful to see him go, but he's going to something that I know is going to be fabulous for him and his family, and I wish you the very best.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. I sort of want to echo literally everything that everyone has said tonight, and thank you so much for being here, your patience. It's been a long meeting, but a very, very productive meeting. No other comments to be made. At this time, you currently entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Mr. Manning, Ms. Anderson, so move. Thank you very much.